Roll call, please.
Councilman Oberon.
Here.
Councilman Gray.
Here.
Councilwoman Knappel.
Here.
Councilman Petty.
Here.
Councilwoman Warren. Vice Mayor Peters. City Attorney Griffin.
Here.
We have the one item on the agenda is to approve a permit or disapprove the permit for a... Hang on a second.
Make that another here.
I got you.
Here.
We have one permit that's been applied for is for the old tobacco store that was there. The owner did not renew the lease and they want to open their own tobacco store in the same spot. So it's the same business location, it's just a different owner.
Does that owner have other businesses?
He owns that whole strip mall.
I mean other, um, okay.
I don't know.
Do they have a permit, or the previous owners have a permit in the same place?
Yes.
Okay.
It just has to be changed into another owner, they can't operate off of it.
They can't transfer.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Oberon.
Yes.
Councilman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel.
Yes.
Councilman Petty.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Peters.
Yes.
Motion carries. Take a motion to adjourn?
I'll mo... I'll second.
All in favor?
Aight.
We have to apply to the public hearing, so y'all...
We can work on some of those.
Topics, one is speed limits on Main Street, the other one is a 33% rate increase. Will you step up, please, if you will just give us your name and your address to where you live? And we'll get started, what's going on?
My name's Pam Offe, I live at...
Ma'am, could you come over here?
Address you?
Well, just at the podium, so you can do a wee...
Oh, okay.
And then that way you can, we've got the two minute time, so you don't run over.
Alright, I'm Pam Offe, I reside at 130 Twin River Lane, Carthage.
Did you want to say anything other than that?
Not right now.
Anybody else want to speak during the public hearing?
I will.
Okay.
I'm Robert Hewitt, live on Main Street. I oppose a rate increase. I think maybe there should be some money out there from the infrastructure where the government passed the bill. I think should try to get it before the citizens pay it.
Thank you.
This is the only time that the public has an opportunity to speak, correct?
No.
Okay, so they can, we can ask questions during the meeting?
No. You can speak during here or during Citizens Concerned. You can't ask open questions during the meeting.
Is this the speaker?
But you can, here's, here's open to say, anything on this topic you want to talk about, we'll talk about right now. Forty-five minutes you have.
So this is the rate increase or the speed?
Both.
So if people have questions or want information...
You can ask it now.
You need to, we need to ask it.
Yes ma'am.
I'm just clarifying.
Okay, I'm Sarah Marie Smith, I'm here in Carthage, 220 Irvin Drive. I do want to speak, we had an opportunity last time to speak in the July meeting, and I appreciate that. I have people on my back, but I feel like, no. What I'd like to do is just kind of follow up on what we talked about last time. I do want to call your attention to something, back in November of last year, when there was a change in the mayor, I did send a letter over to Olivia and to the mayor, just listing all the projects that were still in completion.
This is not a campaign for you, let's talk about your issue.
That's, that's what I'm exactly doing, if you would just give me a chance. The last one on this list was that there was over 20, $25 million in state revolving fund loans for water and sewer projects that was passed along. You had a choice to do whatever you wanted with those, it was 70% priority loans forgiveness. There was, that means that we would only have to pay 30% on these loans, plus interest, plus depreciation. We had funds in the ARP grant that we'd been put aside to match these loans. And we also had a huge reserve fund for depreciation. So if we took out 10 million from these loans and didn't use the rest, depreciation over 40 years would be about 250,000 a year, which we could have covered for, I think, about eight years if that's, if that's right. I know the time is going here, so I'm gonna ask you guys, given everything that we have done, given the way this was done without a proper procedure, I'm gonna ask you to do one of two things when you vote on this. It's ordinance CO2-230703. The first one is, please either amend the ordinance that it's 3% per year for the next three years, take your time, find out grants, we can cover all of this, that's your job, define grants. Your job is not to increase interest or increase the rate on these folks. And the other one would be to table this all together till next month or beyond, when you've had a chance to really research it.
Ma'am, your time's up.
Okay, but I'm gonna finish.
No, you're not. Your time is up.
Okay. Alrighty. It's the best interest of the citizens not to increase this 33%, I'm sorry, it's just not.
I have a question.
Yes sir.
Y'all had access to $25 million to...
That's not a true statement.
Well, what is the true statement?
Scott, you can address that fully, please. You know all the finances, I know you don't want to do it again, but...
Well, number one...
Ma'am, you have, you speak.
Well, I'm listening.
Number one, we don't have access to $25 million. Could you have? And even if we, no.
There was never any?
We could never afford to pay the debt on 70% or 50% of $25 million. We don't have the money to do that.
Scott, you know you didn't have to take the whole thing out.
If you continue to talk, we're asking you to leave, okay? You have your chance, let him answer this gentleman's question, please.
We are using $5.8 million of SRF funds, in addition to the $1.6 million we already have. That maximizes the amount that the town of Carthage can borrow. So we're making use of available resources. Even if we could get $25 million free and board, there's no way we would close down every street in Carthage to do $25 million worth of work within a timeframe at one time.
Why would you want to close down every street?
They only give you so much time to use the grant money. What he's saying is, we couldn't complete the projects in the year that they gave us to do it, in the $25 million.
I, as the finance officer, would never asked about this $25 million before it was submitted. And I have been asked, okay, I would have disagreed with it and said, "We can't afford to do that." What happens, whenever you submit those, they go on a priority ranking list, okay? The state does that based on your poverty levels and population and so forth. They produce a priority ranking list of this to all the projects whoever's got approved, okay? Then what happens is, you have to justify to the Department TDEC, Department of Environmental Conservation, and the state revolving fund folks. You have to prove to them that number one, you could service that kind of debt. Number two, you have to prove that you can complete the jobs in the amount of time. And number three, they do a fiscal review where they would look at all of our finances and they would come back and say, "Hey, you can't afford to do this," okay? So, as far as any other federal monies that's been mentioned, we have made use of all ARP monies that have come to us. The only monies we have left remaining is $765,000 coming from the TDEC ARP fund, okay? That's already been budgeted and planned towards $5.8 million worth of construction for Smothman, Carmack, Hillcrest, water sewer lines, okay, for this next coming year. It's already been planned, we've already got it and budgeted that way. That's the only money that we have. We do have a program with the Corps of Engineers right now for the water bank erosion project. We're evaluating that because there may be a regional sewer plant. We don't know if we're gonna go through with it or not, because there's no use putting $3 million of work on the riverbank if we're gonna build a county plant, okay? Even at that point, with Corps of Engineers, they do have monies through the Bipartisan Act that was passed by Congress, but it's only for Corps of Engineer projects. The Corps of Engineers doesn't do water lines, they don't do sewer lines. They do dredging, they do rivers, they do dams, okay? That's their purview. There is a possibility through EPA that we could apply for something there, but there's no guarantee of that, okay? But it's not gonna be $25 million, okay?
Are you gonna give extra time to citizens if you're gonna take this all up?
Are you gonna stop talking?
I'm just asking.
Are you gonna stop talking? You keep interrupting, you're taking time away from them, too. You're the one that put out the misinformation we're trying to clean up, okay? This is all your fault.
Okay.
Thank you.
You've gotten bum-schoo, the public has gotten bum-schoo, okay? It's as simple a way as I can say it.
Yeah, we're getting hit with the 33% increase, I understand you've already indicated was done inappropriately.
It was identified, ma'am.
We fixed that. We reimbursed that money, we sent it back, we got the ordinance for the second reading. The attorney caught that, it wasn't brought to a citizen, our attorney caught the mistake that we made. And I'll take full responsibility, I made the mistake. And I'll take ownership of it, I made that mistake, but we fixed that mistake. If we don't increase it 33%, we're gonna be in the negative, and then the state's gonna come in and set our rates for us, and there's no penalty they're gonna put it at.
But more important than that, is even if you borrow an SRF loan, let's say it's $1,000, okay? You still have to come up with, let's say it was 70%, which the loans we have now are not gonna be 70%, okay? The best we have is 50% on that 5.8, that's the best we have. You still have to come up with the money that they don't give to you, okay? And then, you don't get the money upfront, you have to spend the money, then get reimbursed for it. We don't have the cash flow, okay, to, to do that. That's one reason. But without any pavement, or not even my pavement, without any improvements, okay? We need the rate increase just to cover operations, okay? And then, that's just operations, because everything has gone up, repairs and maintenance, 100%. Every line item on last year's water sewer fund has gone up, chemicals and everything, and the department heads can speak to that, okay? Another example is where we dump our sludge. We had a contract for $4,000 in prior years. It is now $6,000, okay? Everything has gone up. If we're going to do the streets, not the streets, but the water lines and the sewer lines, and then come to the general fund and pave over those roads, there has to be money and cash flow in order to do it. And that, that's what it looks like, yeah? If you're gonna do water lines and sewer lines, there's gonna have to be something. But even just for operations, there has to be some level of an increase.
Okay, so what, what you're saying is the 33% is just covering, I mean, we're not gonna get any of the streets or anything done, you're just covering increases in operation costs?
That 33% enables us to have the cash flow to complete the jobs that we're trying to get done in 12 to 36 months. We gotta have the cash to maintain operations, pay the bills, in addition to fronting the money for the construction bills before they are reimbursed from the state revolving fund loans. They do not give us the money upfront, because they approve every expenditure that comes out, okay? They approve every check before they disperse it. So we have to give them a purchase order, we have to give them a copy of the contract, we have to give them a copy of the check where we have already spent. And then, it takes three to four months for them to reimburse us for that money. We gotta have money to operate during that time. So if we're gonna continue to improve 50-year-old water lines, there has to be a proactive plan in order to finance the whole thing. I wish there was $25 million available, but it's not, okay? Anybody that says it is, doesn't understand what they're talking about.
It was a cutoff in May between 30th, so don't get it.
That's the fourth time you've interrupted the meeting.
Well, I'm just sorry...
No, ma'am, the next time you do that, I'm gonna ask you to leave. Fair enough, you have your time.
I'll ask, is Derek out there? Derek?
Yeah, hang on, he's coming. Yes, sir.
Can we do $25 million worth of work at one time?
Uh, no, sir.
You're misleading them, Scott. You don't have to take, you know that, you're misleading them.
Do not question my opinion.
And the money's not there available, you didn't take it, so it's not available.
Cut a order.
We couldn't do it anyway, ma'am. Okay, I understand the concept, but I'm just... What I'm saying, sir, is, we're doing the best we can for the citizens. A rate increase is required compared to every other utility district around us, and you see Carthage remains, even if that's approved, competitive, okay? You will find that other utility districts have taken the approach of, if you got $1,000, or if you got $2,000 at a rate first, okay, first payment, they've now, they said, "Well, we don't have a rate increase, but you're only gonna get $1,000 for what you were paying." Okay, so in effect, they have a rate increase, but they've done it in another way. We have tried to do this in a way that we have a plan for 12 to 36 to 60 months in order to have a systemic plan that we can afford, okay? If we can get free federal monies, we'll do so. And that which we have gotten, we are abused for the purpose in which it was given, okay? And we made that decision in our budget for the last 24 months. We use that money to approve water and sewer lines, and that's what we've done, okay? I don't know what else to say other than, if you want to see the actual details, you want to read the law, you can visit with me any day of the week, okay? And I'll go through everything, and you can read exactly SRF. We'll call the technical team, we'll call whoever you want to call, and you can research the facts. That's my offering to you and the rest of the public.
Could you sign it? Just...
Yeah.
No, 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 you, sir, it's okay.
No.
Mr. McGrath, that you're raising his hand.
And your state, can I talk to you?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I understand that by Cindy in the office here, that my new bill for 1,000 gallons is gonna be 71.79 a month, is that correct? Anybody hear that? $71 and 79 cents for 1,000 gallons.
That doesn't sound correct, but I don't know.
I bet not be correct, because I can't afford that.
I don't think it's $71.
Well, somebody needs to get her stringed out, then, because she's talking for all of you when she sits here in the office and nobody's around.
Mr. McGrath, you'll meet me at 8 o'clock in the morning, we'll look up your account.
Who is, I, I don't, I don't understand.
The minimum rate for your bill is $23.50, that's the first 1,000 gallons.
If you pass this, it's going up to 71, 7...
No, sir, it's right here.
What is your name?
My name is Scott Ezzell.
Okay.
8 o'clock, you come to my office.
Y'all be here, I only live down the street, you know where I am. I'm real close, too close. Appreciate it.
Ezzell.
E-Z-E-L-L.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks, ma'am. Next person that wants to speak?
Name's Justine Lewis, I live on Jackson Avenue. And one question I have, is any of this increase that's gonna be used for like the construction that we just finished downtown on Main Street? Or is this specifically just for the sewer lines and the water corrections?
The project for downtown was paid for already with last set of ARP money and some city funds. This is for new construction on Carmack's, Smothman, Hillcrest, Jordan, those particular ones. It has nothing to do with Main Street.
Well, the 33% increase, that's, that's a pretty big jump, you know? I didn't get very much on, I mean, I don't know what your pay raises are, whatever, but just thinking about myself, I didn't get but just maybe a 7%. And 33%, that's a huge amount, really, for a single person, you know, living by theirself. Normally, my water bill's about $70, and this last one was 90, I think 94. But that's just a big increase, and so it seems like that it could have been done a little bit differently, maybe, you know, if you have to have it, do it in steps, you know, instead of just sending, you know, if, like the lady across the street, she said her water bill was usually 300, and now it's 400. You know, that's just a big increase, and so I, I have...
It is, yes, I agree. Anybody else ready to speak?
I do, sir.
Sure.
It's Hatt Parkers and so, I seem a little wibbly-wobbly, just don't pay attention to me. My name's Mary Jo Hackett, I own a lot here in Carthage, and my brother also lives in Carthage. I live at Here Mole. What I'm asking is, my brother is on a limited income, and I mean a limited income. You're not talking about pinching pennies, you're talking making them squeal. You don't, we cast pennies aside like they're nothing, they don't, because these people are poor. They don't have anybody to stand up for them. And with this rate increase of 33%, does not anybody care about these people? You don't know what's gonna happen one of these days, you could be right down there where they are. You need to think long and hard about that, the way you treat people. You treat each other with respect, no matter who they are, where they came from, you treat it with respect. And as I said, they don't have money like that to just suddenly dish out whatever. And he does use quite a bit of water, and he has to pay for the sewage, so that's two in one. And I just, I think it's a shame. And y'all may think that I'm the stupidest person in the world. I will have you to know I have a degree in social work, and I'm a retired registered nurse. And I've seen it too many times, these people being taken advantage of. And it's people that know me, know I speak my mind. I never bother anybody until I feel like I need to stand up and say something. And this increase is too much, it shouldn't, never been allowed to pass, whatever, first, second, whatever. And y'all councilmen, as I said, y'all need to think long and hard about what you did, because these people will suffer as a result. And you may not think it'd be much out of their check, but they don't have much, any to take out of their check. So that's my speech, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Sorry, I left my wallet.
Do we have anyone else that wants to speak?
I have a question. Could you explain maybe, because maybe this is common knowledge and I'm just ignorant of the facts, what was the timeline for you all's discussion and, and making the decision about the rate increase?
The deliberation on the rate increase?
Yes.
What was our first budget meeting, March or April?
February.
February. We started, we started talking about this in February, we had four budget, three budget meetings. And was it cost, because a lot of people don't realize it, but the sewer and water fund is mandatory to show profit. It has to show a profit every year by state laws, whether it be 50 cents or $10. It has to be in the positive. If you go negative two years in a row, they're gonna come in and set our rates for us. Scott, what would be, $22,000 in the negative this year?
Prior to the audit and the pension adjustment.
Yes, see, so we're, and if we do the second year, then state is coming to set the rates. We discussed it in February, we discussed doing the gradual buildup, but if we do the gradual buildup, we won't be able to complete the projects that we need to complete. There's a lot of stuff coming down the pipe from the state, as far as replacing water lines mandatory. If you have a lead or copper pipe going from the meter to your house in 2020...
If you have a lead or copper pipe going from the meter to your house in 2025, those all have to be replaced by law. So that's going to be another expense that we have to do. There's, there's some pipes in the roads that have been there for 50, 60 years that are no longer meet the standard but they're grandfathered in. We need to replace those. There's not been very much infrastructure done in the city in a very long time. We are running on poor, poor infrastructure right now. I mean, all I had to tell you is drive the streets. If you go up on Hillcrest, just see the middle of the road is like this, dipping down, that's because the sewer pipe is disintegrated, it's no longer there. And the sewer is just running in the natural void of the road. We have to fix those problems. We can't just leave them go. And we don't have the money now. I mean, if the council decides to have to raise it, that's fine, that's their decision, but we won't be able to do any repairs. We'll just be doing piecemeal like we've been doing and cutting holes in the pavement and patching water here and sewer there. But we've been talking about it since February. Does that answer your question?
It does. I did have one other, based on what you said, I had one other clarification. You said there are a lot of things coming down the pipe. This is a 33% increase, which is obviously impacting people because they're here.
It does, yes, I agree.
Where is that going to get Carthage? And with the new stuff coming down the pipe, how long will this 33% increase be enough to cover what you feel like you need to make your expenses? Or what is the next, when is the next increase after this?
We don't anticipate having another increase for what, five years, Scott, something like that? Somewhere, depending on the...
We give a couple of facts.
Yeah, depending on the mandate by the state. If the state mandates us to do this, there's going to be funds available. So hopefully, we're going to get some grant money and do that. But if the state says, you do this, it's federal law, we're not paying for it, then we'll do the best we can. But I mean, there's a, there's a whole lot that goes into the water, like our general fund. We can't even take money out of our general fund and put it into our water and sewer fund. We've got good money in our general fund, but we can't even transfer it over. It's a separate entity. And that's where the state gets you because they say, you got to run it like a business, you have to show a profit or we'll set your rates for you to you so you can make a profit. And we've got it down to the bare minimum. I mean, the 33% is going to get us the, go ahead, Scott.
The general fund, with the comptroller's approval, can loan money to the water sewer fund.
But it's a loan.
But it is a loan. Can't just use property tax money for water sewer. The whole concept is that the water sewer operates like any business anywhere. That's why they want you to have positive cash flow and positive profits, okay? Because they've had too many municipalities that have gone under because they couldn't afford to pay operating bills, okay, from the water sewer. Historically, municipalities are afraid to raise rates just because of this. Two years ago, I recommended an increase, okay? This is the second year that I've recommended an increase. Not just myself, I don't make all those decisions by myself. I make recommendations, the council makes the decisions, they chose not to enforce it. Just operation, okay? Just give us, for example, if we do the Corps of Engineers project, okay, that, if we do the Corps of Engineers project, okay, it comes in February that we've had to pay for it, okay? We will owe 800 to 1,000 or $1,050,000 that comes out of the $2 million we have now, okay? We're trying to decide, do we have to do this or not? Because we have the regional plant coming, the sewer department operator, department head is trying to do a different thing so that if it did fall in the river, we'd still, tanks that do the sewage would still be safe, okay? So there's multiple factors involved with those kind of decisions. We have to plan on the worst case, okay? I can't, I don't know why everything has gone, I do know why everything has gone up, but repairs and maintenance is 100% over what we budgeted, okay? And the chemicals to treat drinking water are 80% above, somewhere that money comes from, okay? Cash flow is the primary consideration of why we need the increase. If we're going to do and follow through with what Mr. Marissa Smith had done as far as the inflow and infiltration, if we're going to do what she correctly did, getting that in place, if we're going to follow those recommendations, we've got to have cash to do that. I wish there was free government money, okay? Call, call the congressmen, see if we can get it, okay? But it doesn't exist right at this moment. And everything that they're doing is they're running it through TDE, who looks at every municipality and they decide, are you financially capable, are you operationally capable to do for everything that you're asking for, okay? So we are trying to do that which we can afford in a systemic, planned way that we can afford. If during the future, we have an opportunity to get additional federal monies, okay, we will by all means make use of that. But if we don't do anything at all operationally, we are going to need additional income. Water rates is the only thing we have, okay?
Are y'all applying for, for grants or loans? I mean, do those take time to...
Yes, they do. We, we apply for everyone that comes available.
What, which ones are you applying to?
We have, we have Tommy Lee at the Upper Cumberland Development District. He and Marcy Ackerman are researching everything that we can. We have engaged them to, to look at that. I've called Corps of Engineer, I've checked with Environmental Protection Agency, all of it, they're running through TDE. TDE has their criteria for when they're allowing to get those monies.
But just applying, I mean, are you applying? Because look, that takes time.
Right, but a lot of times your grants will open up and allow a window. So we just applied for a $7 million grant for the new sewer plant. Our match lasts only 10%. So, and that's with all the three cities in the county all involved who pay that back. So that, that opened up, it's called a competitive grant. There's no telling when the government's going to say, okay, we've got this money available, these grants are out there. But we got someone that's watching that, someone that come out, we automatically apply for them. Because we need every dollar we can get. And we just found, just out of the data, the EPA has a possibility of loaning or giving out some money for infrastructure, so we want to try and get money from them also.
And if that comes through, will the rates go back down?
I can't answer that right now. I'd love to do that, I mean, but I can't answer that because they may say you can have $100,000. I don't know. That's an unknown question. But if they give us plenty of money, sure, I mean, we'll entertain them. I don't think anybody here would not entertain that idea.
Sure.
So hypothetically, if all the money was available and we had these repairs to look at to get them done, how much money will it actually take to do these repairs? Not time-wise, money-wise.
Are you talking just the, the streets we have planned?
What we have.
The whole, the whole shebang.
Nope. I'm just curious, just a curious number.
That's a good question.
Probably between 30 and 50 million dollars.
Yeah, between 30 and 50. That's not count the sewer plant, if I count the new wastewater treatment.
Well, the sewer, that, see, you're talking about a different situation there.
Well, I'm saying...
But the rest, but the rest of it, yeah.
30 to 50 million.
30, 50 million.
Would cover probably every line and every sewer without problems.
We need to buy mega millions and...
Yeah, we need to win the lottery with this, right?
That's what we're trying to do. A little bit of time and...
No, I was just...
But make surprise, we had to make it years.
I can just imagine if we said, well, as a city, we're buying a lottery ticket.
Hey, 1.5 billion, let me get up here.
Would you let the citizens speak, please? Your turn.
We can't, we're having a conversation with a citizen.
We can't have, I mean, I know as a city, as a city and a government entity, we can't, we can't, we can't gamble. That's against the law. But, my name is Jerry Solomonee, I live here in Carthage. I'm part owner of Rock Billy Coffee. And let me just say that obviously this water increase is going to hurt us. We're going to have, we're going to try to absorb as much as we can, but we know it's going to happen. That's why I asked the question, what's it going to cost to do the whole ball, ball wax? So I realize there are going to be, I can't fathom a 33% interest rate or increase, but I can fathom the fact that there's going to be something. I can see that. So let's be reasonable about it. That's all I can say. Let's be reasonable, vote reasonably, and think about the citizens of Carthage. Because I'm retired, I'm, I don't get paid to work at the Carth, the coffee shop. My wife does, but I don't. I empty trash and stuff like that. But anyway, that's what I'm looking at. Number two, speed limit in town, obviously it's going to affect us regardless because we have a business right there in town, you back out, somebody's going to run into you. But 15 mile an hour is too slow. That's, that's obviously too slow. I'm, I'm in favor of a 20 to 25 mile an hour speed limit, not 30. I don't ever get to 30 mile an hour through town. From Diggers up, I do, and from the bridge on, I do. But no, I don't, I just can't see 15 mile an hour, it's not feasible. Even the one down there by the swimming pool, 15 mile an hour is crazy. It's absolutely crazy, but that's another story.
Let me interject into that because I just wanted to make that motion. And I, I wished we had just kept it to the small area around the park and put, when kids are present.
Right. I agree with that. I agree with that. Can that be changed?
Yep.
Yeah, they can change.
Okay.
I'd like to see it changed.
Yeah, I'd like to see it changed. But we're not here to vote on that tonight.
No, we're not.
Okay.
But I'd like to see that changed.
Yeah, I'd like to see it back up to 25 anyway.
It could be added to the agenda. We're already talking about it.
Yeah. Well, just be reasonable, treat us right. We're citizens, we, and a lot of us are on fixed income. So just be right. That's all I ask. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one other, could y'all do 10% over three years? 10, 10, 10 in three years, threaten 30 in one? I mean, it's, like you said, it's kind of a shock to the system.
It is a shock to the system, but if we want to start fixing our city the way it should be fixed, we have to, we can do a 10%, we can do a 2% increase, but then we don't go anywhere because we have to use our operating money to run the plant.
Could we do any improvements with like a 15% increase?
Cut it in half.
Cut it in half? I mean, we might go do one row this year, or do it into budget. And then wait till that's paid off and do another one. That's up to y'all.
We're a little bit trying to play catch-up because some of these things should have been fixed a long time ago. Race, rates were, we were advised to raise the rates a couple of years ago and we didn't. It's been, I can't remember how many years since we've had a rate increase.
2016.
2016.
70.
So it's been a pretty good while since we've had, so it might have been better had we done a little bit each year. But I think we would still be at that same place today.
What that equates to is 4.7% per year. Is that what I would have done if I would have done it over the years, about 4% per year?
But we really are behind on fixing things that have broken. And we're just, this is really just a drop in the bucket, but what we're trying to do is just what absolutely has to be fixed.
I think one, one area too, if we delay a lot of the work, the prices are not going to go down for what we, what we need to fix. I mean, the cost of, of pipes and the cost of materials and the cost of the chemicals they use is going to continue to go up. And I think that's, we've got to take that into consideration, I mean, 50. We could say 10% tonight or we could, next year, next time we could say 40%, we don't know.
Or we say 10%, it's not enough and we go negative, if the state comes in and says here's 70% rates.
And the lines just continue to get older.
But this may help out, maybe if you think about it this way, when's the last time y'all bought a gallon of bleach at the grocery store?
Oh, my goodness.
It's not even a gallon.
It's not even a gallon anymore. It's only 3/4 of a gallon. And that's, we use bleach every day, but we use thousands of gallons.
I was going to ask, could you finish your, perhaps, I felt like you got interrupted from finishing your thought because I had asked you, if you do what you're doing now, you don't anticipate another, another price, another increase for a certain amount of time?
Within five years, I'd say, within five years. We're hoping that we can get the grants and get everything done within that timeframe, but we don't have to raise them.
But that decision's not totally in our hands either.
Yeah, that's, and then with these new guidelines are coming down that we're seeing, it's not going to get much better, I'm just going to, because anything that has lead, copper, or whatever, has asbestos concrete, has to be replaced. We didn't have a choice. And that goes in your homes too.
How much of Carthage's pipes or that you're discussing, I don't know the right word...
The infrastructure.
The infrastructure would qualify as having what you just described, like...
Not, not as many as we thought. I was hoping there'd be more that we could get the grant money for, but there's not, there's not that many because they use a different type. There's different types of material on every road just about because of the different years they were put in, the different materials that were available for them. Did that, does that help? Makes sense? So that's what we're at on plan.
And I had one other question for Mr. Ezell. You had said that the general fund is in very, fairly good shape, that you're not able to do anything with this particular, the sewer and water. Is there something that the council could offer the citizens somewhere else that might take the sting out of some of this increase? I mean, I'm just curious.
I think the council would have heard you to do that, the attorney would have a better question, but it would have to be legislation that would be part of the...
That's a legislative issue, that's a political issue. I can tell you whether you're allowed to do, to do whatever you come up with or not, but...
Whatever you have to do that.
I think her question is, are we be allowed to do that if the council chose to do that?
As on what it is.
I think basically what she's saying, can we cut an area over here to make up for 33% over here?
Maybe a slight decrease in property taxes to somewhat offset, you know, we can't totally offset what we need, but it's something that we might look into. But it's going to take a lot of work, by Scott in particular, to determine what we could drop and still keep that fund. And even then, it might, unfortunately, it might not be permanent, you know?
There's, there's also, I know this, UCHRA, UCHRA helps with utilities for elderly with the fixed income, so that's another option.
And every citizen that comes in and mentions that they have difficulty paying their bill, we direct them to UCHRA. And they can get up to $250 if they qualify, but UCHRA makes that decision. Spoke to a gentleman this morning about it, a Canadian. I have personally paid some people's water bills, okay? Anybody that knows me knows number one, I have integrity. Number two, I care about people more than I care about anything else, okay? Nobody in this room wants this to happen. Nobody wanted their cable bill to go up or anything else to go up, they didn't want their groceries to go up. Our role as leaders is sometimes take people where they don't want to go because we have to keep the town interested. What I would just wish everybody would do is, if you want to know something, go to the head of the stream, okay? The head of the stream is in, right now, in this building around this table. Don't take it from private citizens because they don't have all the information. Come to the head of the stream and we'll show you everything that we can, give you every answer that we can to say, this is why we're trying to do what we're doing. Ideally, we should do a 4% to 5% increase each year to keep up with at least a cost of living inflationary increase. Because everything that we do here increases at the same time. And you can't borrow money for operations. Borrow money for infrastructure to build things, because you can't borrow money to pay the bills. And as the finance officer, I don't want to be in, and I've told them, I don't ever want to be in a place where I'm trying to make payroll and we don't have enough money. I'd like to see that we have a good buffer in place so that if we do have an emergency and we got to spend $8,000 to $5,000 for divers to come, to come to the river and clean up the water intakes, well, I would like to be in a position that we could take, make take that action right then, okay? Because most people life travel, they're drinking water. It's been proposed at times where we could, the utility board requires you to make a dollar. There's no business that I know of that is successful that sets a goal of making a profit of a dollar, okay? Utility board does that for political reasons. The reality of it is, if we're going to run the town's water and sewer operations, we have to do it as a business. It's all to protect the citizens because that's our judiciary role. Nobody wants to do 33%. We do the work that is the right and ethical thing to do for the citizens, it's our mission, that is to replace these existing lines. People got sewage running under the road, under the natural things. We have an obligation to help them. So we want to be in a position to do that.
Uh, do you, excuse me, do you have a date that this work is going to start on these streets and...
We, we just got, I just got the call the other day, we've been cleared to put it out for bid. So we'll put it out for bid. It's a long, it's a long process. We'll put it out for bid, takes two weeks, they'll come in, whoever gets the bid, then we'll have a pre-construction meeting and then we'll have another meeting... and then we'll have another meeting, and then they'll get the work started. We're hoping that we can do it in one phase. Where they, once they finish here, they just move over and just keep getting done. The only problem we're going to run into is like we did with the main street. The asphalt plant will probably close down before they finish the project, so they'll have to pay it the following year. But, it'll be paid, it just won't be completely redone, it'll have to strip it. And I like to say too, my door is never closed to my office. I promise you, if you walk up there and want to speak to me, if I'm not here, they'll call me back and talk to you, and I'll talk to anyone, even if you want to come up here, I promise. If you want to see the finances, it's all public record, we'll give you everything you want.
So, two oh one Fisher. Is, my understanding is the bank to basically Digger's House is the zone you're talking about for the traffic, for the change of the speed?
That's, Sam, that's your motion? What are you, what are you talking about?
Well, we talked about two or three different things, from Black Citizen Bank, Red Light Day Diggers, down to the bridge. Then we talked some more and said, you know, maybe we ought to change it to twenty-five from McDonald's all the way to Walmart.
So, have you done it? Is there a trafficking tax study being done on this?
This traffic study that, that we did for the main street before did not suggest any speed limit changes.
Okay.
So, my suggestion would be to do a citywide twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. That way, they're not going fifteen over here, ten over here, thirty over here, whatever. It just stays consistent, except for the bypass office. That, that would be my recommendation, but that's...
So, my, my question is, to, to basically jump on where, where Jerry was at, is, have any of you tried to get in your car and go fifteen miles an hour? It's impossible.
It just, it would just kill downtown.
And we have several law enforcement officers present who I have all the respect for in the world, and my family are law enforcement officers. I don't think they want to deal with that either. And I get, nobody in this room's probably rolling coal down Main Street in their diesel.
Okay. Can I stop?
I understand.
No, I, I had to call this order. You can speak again during citizens' concerns. Now, it's time to end the citizens'...
You've got people, more people who are speaking. We've been at the same time.
That's the fifth time. We have forty-five minutes. If you look at the, the TCA code, it says we have to lock them time. We still have citizens' concerns where they can speak, okay? You still have a chance to speak, so I'd have to start the meeting.
Would you put it at the beginning of the meeting, so they can?
Just notice, did you, I'm going to call the town of Carthage, meeting orders now six o'clock. Roll call, please.
Tom Smith, Rock.
Here.
Tom Smith, Great.
Here.
Tom Smith, American.
Here.
Tom Smith, Hen.
Here.
Tom Smith, Moore.
Here.
President Peters.
Here.
City Attorney Department.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is going to be considered.
I make the motion that we move the citizens', the citizens' concerns to the first, pardon me, two minutes per person.
That's what the resolution says.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's in ordinance now, the state...
I thought it was, but...
They put the TCA code out, I found it. Anyway.
All right, okay.
I'll second it.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. So, now we're going to the citizens' concerns portion of this thing. Do you have to finish your statement, sir?
Thank you. So, again, without riding your brakes all the way through town, we've been here for fifteen years. The only ticket I've had in my adult life was when it was fifty-five coming by the, before the Justice Center was there, not being slowed down to forty quick enough or thirty before it jumped that way. You know, and I think there is some issue, that's probably why it was changed, of having a twenty-five mile drop that I figured it fast, but I paid my ticket and moved on. But, that would be my main concern, and I, I understand, as he said, I don't, I thought about it after I heard about the change, and I said, I can't remember ever driving through downtown doing thirty miles an hour. I just wouldn't do it, because I'm afraid somebody's going to back into me. And I believe the new traffic pan, pattern is very helpful. I think once people get used to it, it's going to be great. So, that's my main concern. I think a lot of municipalities have the twenty-five mile an hour rule. I don't think the law enforcement in the room are going to be crazy about it, but then it puts somebody at thirty-five, it's a lot more noticeable too, where it is danger to people. And I would also, I didn't know there was a fifteen mile an hour speed zone in front of that pool, and I've never probably driven less than thirty miles an hour in front of it. And I agree, I think if you put during business hours or something like that, if you were to consider that, that would be important.
What I'd like to say is fifteen miles an hour from just north of the pool to just south of the pool, and only when the kids are present.
Children are present, right.
Uh, because there, there's a parking problem, and there're constantly kids running out in front. But, I think we overdid it running that fifteen all the way around to the square.
It may be even better saying, you know, when the pool's open, period.
Well, and then you got ballgames going on.
Okay, I got you.
Kids are coming out between cars all the time on that street. It really is scary.
We, we fixed part of that by cutting out the curb and opening that field up for parking, so that, that helped part of that. Does anyone else want to speak here on citizens' concerns?
I'm Civil Creekmore, and I live in Carthage, and I'm against the huge thirty-three percent water increase. And for one thing, it's, it is hard to afford that much in one chunk. And, and it doesn't seem like it's very competitive. Like, we moved from Nashville, and, you know, we were paying, we started looking for a leak if our bill hit fifty dollars. And we got it here, and it's like ninety-something. And then all of a sudden, last month, we get, you know, a hundred and twenty-something. And, and it's just the two of us. We don't have a car wash or anything, so it's quite expensive already.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
In Metro, do they include your sewer and water and your garbage all in one bill?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't, I just don't know that. And it's only fifty dollars?
Yeah.
How many years ago?
Yeah, uh, how many years ago?
Yeah, I mean, remember what time, what time, like two years, like a year?
Yeah, I mean, I can go home and get a bill.
Well, no, I mean, same, was that ten years ago, or two years ago, or a year ago?
A year ago, I mean, yeah.
That's something we might need to look into. I'm not sold on the thirty-three percent increase.
I don't like it either. We have to pay a water bill too.
If we find a better way, I'm all for it.
All of this day, we'll pay the same bill, okay?
And then I just had a question. You said that you had to operate at a profit that's right in the water department. Does that mean the, the operating area, or the whole, like, the operating income?
The Water Sewer Fund has to operate within what are called generally accepted accounting principles.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we have operating revenues, operating expenses.
Yeah.
Then we have what are called non-operating revenues, okay? Grants, loans.
Yeah.
Those kind of monies are non-operating revenues. We're figuring out the profit. We have to take operating revenues less than operating expenses, which includes depreciation, which means if you buy a five thousand dollar water line, let's say, well, you got to depreciate it over forty years, okay? You buy five point eight million dollars worth, that wastes about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year of just depreciation that's added to that operating.
Yeah, I see that depreciation projected for the, the twenty, twenty-four years, four hundred and thirty-four thousand.
It's real. It's going to go, if we do what we're doing, it will go up a little bit that in the next year.
Oh. I noticed the, yeah, the, okay, we're, we're asking for thirty-three percent increase. The operating expenses are just projected to go up twenty-five percent.
Depreciation?
That's including the depreciation. That's counting, yes. It's only going up twenty-five percent.
We have two million dollars available to us in the Water Sewer Fund. That's cash. Cash flow is king, always. You don't have cash, you can do nothing, as far as this is. So, if we pay a million dollars in cash to do the bank erosion project, okay? That leaves us with a million dollars. It takes me at least, rather than two hundred thousand dollars a month to pay the expenses for just normal operations. So, we want to have a buffer, okay? My goal is to have one that has some dollars made up for, for cash flow, for improvements, emergency repairs, et cetera, okay?
Yeah, because, and it looks like you still have at least a little. I was looking at the seventy-six thousand dollars of operating income that you're projecting. But, then you said you also have to consider non-operating, and you've got a twenty-one thousand dollar loss on that. So, you're still, yeah, you would still have some net income, and...
All I can say to you is, if you've got a better crystal ball than I or anyone else has,
It's just a thought.
Bring it on.
It's like, yeah, yeah.
Rusty, what's that?
Well, I, I was going to add something to that. The thirty-three percent increase is based on the projects we have going now and services are there. But, what you don't realize is, is there's another list out there of improvements that are critical, that hasn't made it to the forefront yet. Like, I, we, my name's Rusty Gentry, and I run the, the Carthage Water Plant. I have three high-service pumps that services the drinking water to the whole town and our utility district. Those three pumps, clean water pumps, are, I was hired thirteen years ago, and they were here before me. They're already to the point that we have to start looking at replacing those. They're not on this list. They've not been accounted for in any way whatsoever. If I replace those three pumps, I'm looking at today, at probably an eight-month wait just to get parts. If those pumps go down, if two of those pumps go down, two of those three, I can still push some water, but I can't service the town. If those pumps go out, the town goes out of water. It will cost me at least two hundred thousand dollars to replace those three pumps.
And that's not even in here.
And so, what I'm saying is, is not only do we have a list of things that we plan on fixing in the next twelve months, we've got a three-month, a three-year plan and a five-year plan to try to, to upgrade some of these other infrastructure needs. We, we've, we've kept the water rates at bay for years and years and years, because nobody wants to bring that up and cause this. And here we are, we're to the point where we've got to become proactive rather than react. Because you just can't, I can't come to Scott tomorrow and say, hey, two of my pumps went down. I need a couple of hundred thousand dollars, or we're going to run out of water. Even if I, even if he would give it to me, I can't get the parts in time. So, we have to do this in advance and get this planned out and get it coming on a schedule. Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of infrastructure out there that is very old in this town.
And did you say there's a possibility you might not have to do that three million dollar, some kind of erosion project? Does that...
Done it on the river where the sewer plant's at.
You might not have to do that?
We don't know.
Oh, so that would be helpful.
It would be helpful, okay? We actually meet with them tomorrow, okay? We're dealing with unknowns about the regional sewer plant, whether it'll happen, okay? And if so, it's still going to be five to seven years before that's in production, okay? So, we're trying to juggle. Do that project, okay? And know if we're going to be cash flow short, or would that move forward with the others? Thank you.
Thank you.
If you would like to make a point about an office, I'll answer all of them.
My name, my name's Fred Piper, and you kind of answered one of my questions. Do we have any idea if the new plant for the three areas would be, you know, passed, or is it going to be done, or are we just talking about it or thinking about it?
Mayor, you're in a better position. The feasible, the feasibility study's been done. All the letters of intent have been sent into T-Dat. That's a project that they want done, because T-Dot actually wants it done, because they want to close the Goinville plant, so they can fix the bluff over there.
Yeah.
So, they're, it's getting pushed. So, I, I've got a good feeling that it is going to happen. We wouldn't apply for a seven million dollar grant if we're getting negative indications.
Well, I mean, to me, that's one of the better ideas I've heard tonight, you know? To be honest with you.
Are you the one that sent the email?
Yeah.
Okay. What, what I wanted to say to you is, is you've used, all the figures you used are from the, the general fund. This, we're talking about the water fund. You used a different, you had the numbers crossed. When you said about the buildings and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, you got those, I just wanted to tell you, I do...
Okay, I'll go back and look at that again then.
Yeah, you got to go to the Water Sewer Fund instead of the general fund.
Okay, well, I noticed in the Water Sewer Fund, we've got that nineteen hundred, a million nine fifty, uh, grant. Have we applied for that?
That is the Corps of Engineers continuing project, where any waterways, bank erosions, dams, locks, dredging, they have a program that is sixty-five percent that they fund, federal dollars, and the local municipality or county has to pay thirty-five percent.
Okay.
That last best estimate that we had, okay, we budgeted was three million dollars, okay? Tomorrow, I think they reduced it to like two point eight million dollars. Wonderful, that'll help us, okay? But, it's still going to be eight hundred thousand dollars to me, if we do that project. Say, I think if Steve Key can speak to it, he is working on, he and his staff are working on a plan where we can take one of the tanks that's next to the river, that would be the problem.
Yeah.
To take it out of its function and do what he has to do. I don't know, I don't know wastewater treatment, okay? But, we take that tank out of production, and that might buy us five years if we didn't do the bank erosion project. So, there are multiple variables that we're dealing with, trying to figure out what's going to be the best use of all. I think most everybody agrees. We could do a regional sewer plant, that's the best thing for everybody in Swin County. But, we have to make decisions based on the information that we have now.
Okay, I, I would just wonder, you know, because that, that's roughly two million dollars that would benefit, with Corps of Engineers, will they come in and say, we have to do this, even though we're building the plant? We're talking seven years. I mean, our vats may be in the water in seven years.
Excellent, excellent question. The way, if you go out and search on their website, you eventually find where they discuss this project, okay? And they say in there, number one, if you don't do it, here's what can possibly happen. It's pretty well, you fall in the river, okay?
Yeah.
And then if you do the project, you know, this is how they're going to do it. But, the reality of it is, it's still an option for us to make that decision. If we're able to get that tank, that's where the problem would be. If we get it out of the circulation, okay? We buy some time without having to spend that million dollars.
Yeah.
When we're budgeting, when we're planning, when we're trying to calculate depreciation, even though it might cost us a million dollars, okay, of our, of our cash, and they fund the one point nine million, we still, on our accounting records, for generally accepted accounting principles, have to set up three million dollars to depreciate over the life of that asset, okay? So, that, that flows into the operating profit, okay? And our loss.
Yeah, do it by life of the asset, of what the government goes by, since thirty-seven and a half years,
or forty-two, forty-two and a half years, for whatever it may be.
We don't have to follow the tax code, okay? So, we will normally follow what the engineers estimate the life of an asset to be. Because I don't know how long bank erosion works. But, I know five years is not right, okay?
Yeah.
And I know a hundred years is probably not right.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
So, it's probably going to be forty.
All right, well, this thirty-three percent in, increase, uh, I'm not for it all in one chunk. I understand everything goes up, supplies in one half year, supplies went up seventeen percent for the water department, or the, being budgeted, seventeen percent increase for the water department. I've been in business, own some businesses, and I understand all of that, you know? But, I do know some people that's having a hard time here. And I would recommend that, uh, maybe you table this for another, for the next one, and that some of those people maybe say something to you, and consider a three-year increase or a two-year increase. At the minimum right now, with an option, if the second year, all right, all of a sudden, we got to have this two million dollars, that that could be worked in, you know, the second year, whatever it is, till it, till it comes up. But, I recommend that you give some, the people some more time here, because a lot of people that I've talked to does not even know about this.
Well, we've sent letters to every water customer, we've put it on Facebook, you know? We've tried to inform everybody. The courier, the website, we put it out everywhere we can put it out besides the building door.
Yeah. I mean, some of them just don't read or listen, I guess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sweet girl. All right. Bass.
Thanks. Counsel, mayor, I need to report a theft. Somebody stole my parking.
We know where it's at, is it the crosswalk?
Well, can we move the crossrock? You gutted my parking. You gutted my parking. Decades, that was parking. Uh, I don't, I've got one slot that starts under my neighbors and it, it ends, in part of it's on me. Otherwise, everything's gone. Kim's doesn't have any parking and she's nice and I am, and I'm too old to care anymore. But folks, if you had that business where Kim is, where I am, you wouldn't be satisfied either. I got nothing now for my folks. Elderly man, that came into the office the other day.
It's boring me, dude.
No, my arm was hurt, had to walk across the street. Folks, it, it's not right. I mean, I don't mind progress, but, uh, he cut me some slack. I mean, decades and decades, the parking's been there, just put the crosswalk back where it was, give me three more parking slots where we had, cause I got nothing now. My, my neighbor uses that one in front of me, which is fine, I mean, it's not mine, but still, I, I, I think I have, uh, I'm just like any other citizen trying to make a living and, and I need my parking slots, just like you would if you were there. Take a look at it, do something for me, for Kim, actually for equals two. Okay?
Absolutely.
That's all I got to say about that. I'm gonna walk back upstairs, back up to my office and go by all your nice parking down here and observe it and dream.
Judge, you can use one of our spots.
Well, you're gonna have a golf cart turn you up? It's not me, I don't care, I got a lot of people, uh, anytime, I do a lot of closings and I'll have, you know, two to four people, uh, two to four cars, anyway you could.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more citizens concerned?
Hey guys, how you doing? All right, so y'all know me, I'm Justin Malden, live at one thirty-six Hilltop Drive. First thing I will say is appreciate you guys, uh, hearing us out, listening to us, listening to the concerns that we have. Uh, I know, I don't envy the position that you're in and nobody who's sitting in here wants to be in the position that you're in. And you're having to contemplate and you're having to decide something that no matter which decision you make, it's not gonna be an easy, easy decision. You don't do a rate increase, you're stuck in a, in a bind. You do a rate increase and you're gonna upset quite a few people. I've looked at the numbers, I've spoke with Mr. Ezeo and I will tell you guys, you guys are lucky to have him, uh, here for your running numbers and doing everything. Uh, he does a fantastic job, um, he's very approachable and provided me all the information that I wanted. When you look at the numbers, you look at these programs, these loan programs and stuff that have been brought up, the SRF program to different things, folks, it don't make sense, number wise, to, to take on the, the large amounts that they're doing, it's not feasible for the, the town in its current capacity to be able to even attempt to do anything. It's not reasonable to do that many projects at one time, it's not reasonable for you guys, under state statute, to keep above float as you have to and according to accounting principles, run as a business to stay in the green, you can't do it. Local government has a problem and an issue though, that it likes to kick the can down the road. Unfortunately, sometimes that can gets kicked so far down the road that drastic steps and measures like this have to be taken. And over time, instead of having small increases, now you're having to look at a drastic step and look at a large increase which is going to affect everybody. If you look at the surrounding municipalities and there's no comparable in the county because you were the only ones that run water and sewer. But if you look at other municipalities in the upper Cumberland and surrounding counties, look at what they're doing, they're raising rates. And they have been this year, last year, it's something that has to be done unfortunately. Uh, so I do appreciate you guys doing it, uh, I see the, see the need and I see the understanding of it. And I'll be honest, looking at the numbers, thirty-three percent's a lot, but in the long run, it may not be enough either. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, that's gonna close the portion of our citizens concerned. I would like to add one thing, I wanna, is Sheriff Hopper here? Bring in, if you don't care, bring in Sheriff Hopper in, uh, Britten East, please.
Bring your man here.
Got a warrant for you, sir.
Oh, really? I'm ready.
What we're doing is, Sheriff Hopper was the chief here for a long, long time. And, uh, what we've done is we put a resolution together to actually let him retire his service weapons with him, so I wanted to present that in front of the folks and say, thank you for everything you've done for this city and this county.
Mayor and Council, y'all, you just don't know what this man's doing. Uh, those two weapons I carried with me for several, several years. Just, I can't thank y'all enough. And I, I wanna say one more thing if I may. I appreciate y'all, everyone in here, I hope you take care of your employees. And, uh, and it shows by the years of service that some of them have got here. Just thank y'all for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Probably felt a little good, it was bad. Uh, the first item on the agenda is considered for approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay, my mayor's report, I probably went over a lot of it during the citizens concerns, but, uh, basically what we're doing is we've been, we received the go ahead to put those items out for bid, the three roadways. We're gonna try and do it, if the rate increase, if the rate increase passes, we're gonna put it out for bid. If it doesn't, we're not gonna put it out for bid because we can't afford it. Um, we did apply for the seven million dollar loan with the other three municipalities for the initial process for the sewer plant, for the wastewater treatment plant. And that's about all, that was going on, that's quite a bit going on at one time there. Go ahead.
The seven million that we applied for, what does that entail for what we do with that? Because the plant's gonna be, what, thirty to fifty million?
It, it just depends. It's anywhere between thirty-three and fifty, give or take, I don't know.
So, so is this like?
The seven million initial money is for engineer fees, buying equipment, if we have to purchase land, whatever we have to do. But luckily, we're at a ten percent match, so therefore, at the seven million, all four of us gotta pay back a total of seven hundred thousand dollars. That's a very good rate.
Yeah.
And so, if we have to purchase, we haven't decided where exactly, wanna put it in the landfill, but it's not feasible, it's gonna cost too much money. So we're gonna do what's best feasible for the citizens to do it that way. Okay, does that answer your question?
Yes, perfectly. Thanks.
Yep. Uh, the next thing is the Department of Committee reports, I believe we have a finance Just, I gave each of you not only the email, but I gave you the, uh, grid report. I primarily just wanna make sure everybody grasped what we have. If you look at the first page, in the general fund, we have the five point four billion dollars, okay? Most of that is in the local government investment pool, um, cause it gets much better rate. The street aid, you'll notice it went down a considerable bit, um, because we have paid for the, uh, uh, the road, Main Street. They haven't cashed the checks yet, but we have paid for it. And I called them about cashing the checks. Did I say what they did? Yes. We actually came in eight thousand dollars under budget on that.
On the road?
On the road, we can't.
Wonderful.
But, I just wanted you to recognize that was substantial dollar amount, uh, cause we had about four sixty in there, uh, but that's Main Street. Uh, and then I want you to see the water sewer fund cash, uh, it's two, two million one hundred and sixty-nine thousand one forty-seven. That's what we have to operate and cash flow trying to do the SRF loans. It's a lot of money for everybody in the world, when it comes to a municipality, when you look at a, it costs a million, eighty thousand dollars to do the water line on Main Street. That was paid out of, uh, ARPA funds and
Cash.
The cash that we have, okay? Why I wasn't applying for an SRF loan, we'll have to ask someone else. The, uh, so general fund, we're very solvent, water sewer cash, right now, we are solvent, okay? Uh, the water, the debt service ratio, uh, it has come up because we have paid off some of that, uh, that we had, but we're not that much above where our goal is. So, we don't ever wanna be at a one to one ratio. That means we can pay our debt and that's it, okay? That's not where we wanna be. And then I wanna brag on Cindy and Julie, uh, they've completed several of the CMFO modules and better educated staff, we feel like it's better for the whole town, so that's what we're trying to do there. I wanted to give you a chance to ask any questions that you might have at this point. We'll report to you, as I did in writing, the refund credits, we calculated, posted to all customers' accounts, went out on the bills this last time, okay? Was a mistake, we fixed it and now we move forward to doing it the right way, so, okay? So all I know to do when mistakes happen is fix it and move on. Excellent.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any reports for the departments? Onto unfinished business, first item on unfinished business is the second reading of water rate CO two zero two zero seven one three one dash two.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
It's not something we wanted to do, but it's something like Mr. Malden said, we're gonna have to do it.
No discussion, roll call please.
Councilman Elrod?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
I wanna have his thing.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Peters?
Yes.
Motion passes. Second item on unfinished business is the budget amendment, second reading BA two zero two three zero seven one three dash two.
Motion to approve.
Full explanation of what it is?
I'll second.
No, I'm sorry.
Out of discussion?
All right, just explain to them, he's like me, what it is.
Scott, could you explain that again, please? Yes, sir.
Just, just briefly.
There were several smaller items that we, I'm a proactive person, don't like to react to stuff, so we moved the property codes official to the police department, so we moving that back around. We're moving these weight study from Burris, Thomas and Associates, difference between that, which was already allocated, moving that in to the budget, okay? Uh, I can't remember, there was a couple other items that were in there that were just moving items from one department to another.
Okay.
Rather than having to re- We're not changing the muddies at all, we're just having to make a budget and then have your approval to move them in. The monies do increase, the monies do increase, they have, they have, but not substantially. Okay. Any more discussion? Roll call please.
Councilman Elrod?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Peters?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is speed limits on Main Street, Council agree?
Yes. See if we can move it down to twenty-five McDonald all the way to Walmart, that'll be enough to have slowed down a little bit.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we make a citywide speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour, except for the bypass and in front of the pool during business hours.
But still.
Those schools are already closing, that's, we, we can't mess with that. That's cap.
I'll second that.
Second.
I've seen a few issues on Main Street, so I'll take any reduction that we can agree on because I have seen some problems, um, at Ward Avenue and Main, I've seen a couple problems there with pedestrians. And, um, I, I think for safety reasons and to give our businesses, um, maybe just a little bit more help there.
Uh, is, is during business hours, is that the correct terminology that we should use for in front of the pool? Or should it be when?
Operating hours.
Or when children are present? Cause that would be outside of
Well, that's gonna make it hard on your law enforcement because they gotta go in and say, oh, someone's in the pool, I gotta pull you over. Just, we'll just do it
I think it's
Hours of operation at the pool.
I think it would be less to do with, well, I understand that, but I think in my mind, it's less to do with the police pulling somebody over and more to do with people actually slowing down when they see children and that just being in their mind at all times.
We can put that on sign, slow down children present, but we can also put down, the speed limit is fifteen mile an hour between the hours of ten.
But we're putting it on the sign, but we can't enforce it. Because we're saying, we're, I know, but what we're saying is during the, these certain hours, but if we say on the sign that there are also children here, should slow down, we're asking them, we're not telling them that they need to slow down because there's children present. Does that make sense or no?
Children present says, hey, pay attention, there's children present. The speed limit is still, it doesn't matter what you put on the side, the speed limit is still the speed limit, it can still be enforced. So, that's just say, why am I slowing down? Because children are present. Does that make sense? We can even put a flash in light, I mean, like the schools do.
It does, I'm just thinking outside of business hours is, is what's in my mind. I don't know how we resolve that.
The park's there. I mean, there's kids there all the time in the park.
That's the point of the motion was, I think that situation with kids running out the road and all is worse when there's ballgames going on than the pool, cause there's plenty of parking when the pool's open. So, that's why I'm not saying that's the terminology.
They're not crossing the road so much during pool hours as they are during evening sports.
Exactly, that's when it's the worst.
But I think it was this good this year, cause you notice they didn't park on the road this month this year, cause they opened that up so they could get into that field department. And if someone has any connections with team, I'd like to make that a parking lot, so they'll be happy to call them and get there.
I brought it up about three years ago.
What is the speed limit through downtown right now?
Thirty?
Thirty.
I could see the downtown two or three blocks dropping to twenty-five, but to drop it citywide to twenty-five?
That's what it is on side streets anyway already.
I know it.
Yeah, it's not
Run it up the ferry area, is that, we're gonna drop that to twenty-five as well, is that thirty?
It's thirty.
So that's not a huge
That Main Street is the only thing that would really
But that's very slow on that for ferry.
I agree. I agree. I think, I'm good with thirty right there.
I think you would be encouraging
Guys, you're gonna bend my motion. You tell me what you want.
You would be encouraging people to go to bypass and
Drop it to twenty-five from Second Avenue to through, through the, that alley or whatever.
If you're gonna do the downtown area, I would do it from the Oak Ridge to Ward Avenue or fight.
Yeah, I think you're just making
That's plenty.
I'd say if we're gonna do Bay, should we do the whole thing?
I'd do too.
And I'm not opposed to that, I'm just saying.
All in Main Street, cause I don't wanna have where it's twenty-five here and thirty here, cause people would come from the thirty and then the twenty-five, if they get a ticket, speed trap.
Upper Ferry's different, I think.
Yeah, leave the Upper Ferry, it's a separate road, let's say Bay Street.
We're gonna turn Carthage into a speed trap, that's what's gonna happen.
That's gonna happen, yeah, so we, we don't want to do that.
I, I like your motion as it stands. I'd like to vote on that one.
Okay. Repeat it.
Just make a citywide motion that all, all citywide motion, city, citywide speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour?
Except for?
Except for the bypass.
And in front of the pool.
And in front of the pool, we're technically fifteen right now. We'll have to put another motion in, Lee.
I just wanna ask you about the ferry.
Yeah.
Twenty-five there too, or you doing thirty?
Every city one.
I mean, I'd like it to be consistent, but that's, that's y'all's choice. I mean, we heard that fifteen's too slow. The citizens said that's too slow, so
I'd go with twenty-five.
That's a good compromise.
For Main Street area.
I mean, twenty-five, if we, if we keep it consistent, maybe our, educate our drivers, they'll stay that consistent.
Well, Upper Ferry, I, I think we should stay at thirty.
That's what people are gonna go with, it's twenty-five. If we put it at twenty-five.
If it's twenty-five, they're gonna go thirty-four miles.
I think so too.
You put it thirty, they're gonna go thirty-five.
Yeah, I think so too.
They go nine mile an hour.
They're still gonna go thirty.
Yeah, they're still gonna go thirty.
I probably still gonna go thirty.
How many accidents have we had through downtown in the last month?
Zero.
Last month? Or the past month, since we last met.
I don't think we've had a single one. There's not any, there's not any.
To be honest, I mean, if we had one, it's maybe one, but I can't even recall that.
With the new parking, they can actually back out without getting in any traffic as well.
That is helpful, but there's still some areas of problem, like at Ward Avenue, at-
I agree.
Second, is it second, yeah.
I think the turn lane should be taken down farther down, that way there's not that-
Yes.
Gap right there, where people are cutting in front of the other traffic turn.
And you can't see a pedestrian coming out from there. So that's, that's why I think we can slow-
More parking all the way down Main Street.
And then when we do have kids events too, it's a little bit slower, so people are, are more aware of being a little bit slower on Main Street. I think it'll just help the businesses.
I mean, yeah, if you got- Any more discussion?
I'd like to amend the motion to keep it at thirty miles an hour from Smith County Bank to the red light, where it crosses toward the Walmart. Upper, Upper Ferry Road.
Upper Ferry Road.
Upper Ferry Road.
Is there going Smith County Bank to-
Smith County Bank, Smith County Bank to the red light toward Walmart. Upper Ferry Road.
Well, see, that's not Upper Ferry Road, that's part of Main Street, Smith County Bank, just say Upper Ferry Road at thirty.
Up, up.
Because, because if you do that, you got a part of Main Street in that room.
Upper Ferry Road then.
Okay, that's your amendment, any second on that amendment?
Second.
Okay, we need to vote on the amendment?
Are you waiting for us to vote?
Alright, is it roll call?
Is it roll call or?
Mm-hmm, all in favor?
Aha.
So we have two, three?
I'm, good with it.
I'm not, I'm opposed to, are you asking for a pose?
Yes, opposed.
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 More opposed.
You mean to go all?
No, just, just to leave it to Upper Ferry at thirty, so the event-
His amendment.
Your amendment does not pass. Okay. Now, any more discussion on my motion? All in favor?
Can I ask, what, what exactly you stated about our own pool?
The pool was, the pool will stay at fifteen miles an hour while children are present or during operating hours. Which is ten to four, ten to five, so that way we got it covered.
That oars.
I like the ball game, it's like-
That would be the oar.
One, two, and the third.
It's covered. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Four, four, two against. Motion carries. Alright, next item on the agenda is welcome sign, Vice Mayor Peters.
So I showed you, uh, I don't know if everybody else, I know everybody else hasn't seen it. Um, I can show you now, I can send you an email, I got, this is just a, an example, you can pass it around, feel free. Um, where it would say, Town of Carthage, City of Carthage, uh, welcome, whatever, but just kinda in that style. We talked about Suzanne out there on Highway twenty-five, I talked to her, she said she'd be able to do it, she gave me size options that we would be able to, um, go with. If you guys approve, we could even put, we, we had discussed, um, it being similar to the new magnets that were put on to the City of Carthage trucks that she also did, uh, in the, uh, picture area, maybe something like the bridge or something like that, to make it look nice. You guys like that, but that's kinda where I'm at with it, is she's giving me sizes, I can email you guys all that kinda information, and we can talk about it next meeting if you like.
Do we have a place, have you picked out a place to put these signs?
That was the first thing we talked-
The sign's there now, it just needs to-
Were you redoing that, okay, I thought that was where it was going, okay.
Yeah, and we did discuss possibly looking at other areas of all the entrance points.
Yes.
Um, the twenty-five is obviously the main one, we have one there and it's outdated. Um, but we've got two more entry points by the bridge and one's coming from the bypass, yeah.
The problem with Upper Ferry is-
Where are you gonna put it?
Well, this is all solid rock, we had to go and put concrete in one of our signs, because it just fell over, because it's solid rock in there, so.
Yeah.
But I, I like the idea of all the entrance points, that's a good thing, let everybody know, hey, we're here, come see us. Okay, so are you gonna?
Yes, I, I wanted to, to kinda get an approval before we went into cost, but that would be, I'm gonna email you guys the size options that we've got, and then we can base the prices off that, I'll send us the prices with those sign options, or size options.
I'll make a motion.
And then, and then we can talk about it next month.
Put it into a motion.
Make, make a motion that, um, I'll send, um, emails to everybody with, I'll put the picture, the size options, with the prices for each size option. Um, and we will discuss it next meeting.
Second. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Thank you guys.
Motion carries, any opposed? Councilman Petty, PA system.
Not really moved a whole lot on it, I don't know that it's necessary, sadly, didn't seem to think it was real necessary.
You want it removed from the agenda?
I'd say let's just remove it.
You're the author, you can do that.
Alright.
Alright, new business, first one is Resolution CR two zero two three zero eight zero three, special permits or street closures, have y'all a chance to read that resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Do you wanna hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Would you consider adding a skate clause on there, maybe in case, like the maneuvers, for instance, that's a new thing that we have in town. If somebody comes with an idea in the future, we're kinda hamstrung on being able to give them a street closure, if they, if it makes sense to have it up on downtown square, so.
I agree, you know why I put that resolution on there? We've been talking about this for three years, and no one's brought a solution in, so I put up a solution, let's come to a conclusion and be done with this one. We're, we don't need to keep beating this up.
We have been talking about this a long time, what's best for the businesses, what's best for the individual.
Yeah, we're gonna do what's best for the city, let's just do it and move on, instead of bringing this back every month when someone wants a permit, say, well, no, yes, no.
Well, especially, we've increased the areas that we can have events.
Yeah, I mean, we'll give a permit any day of the week for down at Dog Park, and, I mean, we've got stuff, we got bouncy houses, we can put down there for people coming, we got all kinds of stuff for entertainment. Yeah, I know, I know.
Well, and there's an, uh, an area, the parking lot behind the courthouse, is a good, large area that's usually empty and could be easily emptied for any event, the Halloween event, for instance, would be safer there, I believe.
A whole lot safer than Main Street, I mean, you've got, anytime you've got rubber cones protecting kids, I get nervous, but that's just me. If anyone has any questions, ask Billy Warner, he got hit by a car during an event on Main Street, and he's an adult, so.
Just one quick thing, I would like to wr, bring up what I said at the last meeting, I think we need to look into buying some of those temporary barrier things too.
I mean, why, why are we buying the temporary, that's, that's going, that's on the courthouse property, we don't have any property to barricade, all we have is barricades, the road. See what I mean?
But aren't we still allowing like things like Walton Days?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't get, what, what, we're talking about barricades for what?
Coming north on Main Street and south on Main-
You're talking about something different. Last night they were talking about inserting the courthouse with barricades.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just talking about, just to, to give more credence to the fact that this road's closed.
Motion to look into the process of them, didn't hear anything.
I'll second.
All in favor?
We're still on-
You're still on motion?
Okay.
You just voted another motion before that motion.
Alright.
Any more discussion?
So, so let's, we'll vote on this and then we can bring that up then.
All in favor?
Aha.
Alright.
Ten, so we got four, any opposed?
Oh.
Five, one, motion carries.
You wanna?
Now you wanna do that motion that you wanted to do?
Motion to look into the cost of the temporary barriers, I don't know the proper-
I know what you're talking about.
But anyway, I think we're on the same page.
I think they call them jersey barriers.
Okay.
Carthage barriers.
Yeah, that's it.
Second.
Could those be rented?
Probably.
Yeah, they, they, you can rent those.
But over a certain amount of time, you end up, you're better off just to own them.
I'd like to look at the price first, but-
I would say I'm leery about that, because I don't want to put nothing heavy on that road, but that's just me.
They're not that heavy though.
But you're talking about the concrete barriers?
No, I'm talking about the ones-
Metal, metal, like the cattle gate, oh, basically.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't stop a car if somebody did do something-
No, it's just gonna give them-
Be more visible.
Make it more visible.
I thought we were talking about concrete, to stop them.
Maybe that and the, and the orange triangle, put on them, you know?
Yeah, okay, let's, let's get back bumping here.
Okay.
Any motion, we have a second?
Yeah.
Second, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Alright, next item on the agenda is gonna be a lift side mower purchase for Public Works, I'll explain this a little bit. Uh, in the budget, we budgeted two hundred twenty-five thousand for a new building, okay? Les came to me and said, you know, I don't really need that building as much as I need a, a boom arm mower, because if you notice our streets, our school buses are starting to hit the trees on the top, we need that to cut the trees back and trim the ditches and stuff. And he can explain more what he's gonna be able to do with it. So he prompted that, he said, I'd rather do what's best for the citizens and have this mower to take care of them, instead of having a building for him to put his trucks in. So he wants to move the money from that and buy this mower, which is actually gonna save some money for the city, with-
I think inside Carson, they're just getting where they can come over here. We have a lot of riderways, we have to clean sewer lines, and I think we can maybe-
We do get a lot of complaints, and bus drivers have complained.
What's the cost?
Two hundred seventy-eight thousand. I didn't price it, I just gave you the number.
I wasn't expecting that.
That's off the state's bid.
That's state bid, I mean, that's, you can't buy it anywhere cheaper.
But I, if, if I understood, I'm not gonna put words in his mouth, but I think we've got it in the budget, right?
It is in the budget, yes. We're just not going to build the streets building this year until twenty-one.
I'd rather have the tractor push, I would have it, I've been here for thirty-nine years, so it probably makes it-
That, that also opens visibility, when those trees get so big, you cannot see the school buses coming down the street.
Straight signs or anything, if you run out of time, things are hanging down.
So I'd probably just get where they can come through.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Roll call please. Wait, hold up, any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Elrod?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Apple?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.[1742.52]